Twenty-five on the county commissioners bulletin board first floor administration building annex jersey city new jersey copies of the above mentioned resolution have been sent to the county clerk and the editors of the carney observer and the star ledger. May I have a motion? Excuse me. The next order of business is to discuss day's agenda. I'll turn it over to the administration.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any additional items.
Continue, Mr. Clark.
According to the policy set by the-
Whoa, 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 we have, we have items.
Yeah, Chairman, it is my understanding that the board is going to introduce and move an additional item for the agenda, which is, the title of which is supporting New Jersey Senate Bill number S three six seven two establishing protections for immigrants interacting with government agencies designates New Jersey Immigrant Trust Act.
That will be resolution number thirty-two.
We, I asked, requested it, but I believe it's gonna be the board as a whole.
Board as a whole?
Right, board as a whole.
So that'll be board as a whole, number thirty-two.
And it was gonna be the original second, but board as a whole is always better.
Additionally, commissioners, we have one additional one. I'll read it by title, supporting the New Jersey Senate Bill number S four 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 two requiring classy and club alcohol beverage license holders to update their existing health warning notices. That will be resolution number thirty-three.
I'll sponsor that.
Oh, day, Ed. I'll second.
Did you hear me? You have me in?
Yes, we can.
All right, because I've been here, but I haven't heard anything.
Walt, Walter, so they have, they have our underboard secretary, Rodriguez. Gary Walker's-
The, the, the record should indicate the presence now of Commissioner Rodriguez and Commissioner Walker via virtual appearance.
According to the policy set by the Board of County Commissioners, members of the public are asked to limit their comments to five minutes when discussing agenda items and three minutes at the conclusion of the meeting for persons who are submitting a written request to discuss matters of public interest. At this time, the public may address the board on agenda items only. Please keep, keep your comments limited to five minutes. Are there any speakers on the agenda items only?
And Chairman, before any speaker's approach-
Commissioner Lipsky's there.
Commissioner Ponte Lipsky is present. Are there any speakers on agenda items? You just come up and state your name and spell your last name, please.
All right, hello, county commissioners. My name is Courtney Walker, and I'm a resident of Jersey City. I'm here today to urge you to pass the resolution, which was added to the agenda, I believe, number thirty-two, which is to support the New Jersey Immigrant Trust Act. This act protects immigrants when they interact with government agencies and reinforces the separation between local law enforcement and federal immigration enforcement. Now more than ever, our county must stand with our immigrant community. Hudson County is one of the most diverse in New Jersey, and our communities are being directly targeted. Earlier this month, six armed individuals were seen in the main lot at Braddock Park, two with full face coverings, two with visible holsters. Many in the community suspected they were ICE. When asked to identify themselves, they hid from the camera and stayed silent. When the Hudson County Sheriff arrived, the officer chose to question the person filming rather than the armed group. Then, just last week, ICE agents detained a Jersey City resident in the Heights while his child sat in the car behind, beside him, right across from Christ Hospital. Supporting this resolution is about both public safety and human decency. Every resident deserves to feel safe in our neighborhoods, in our schools, hospitals, parks, and in interactions with law enforcement, and we deserve to know that our local officials are putting families and communities first. This is the fourth time I've stood before you asking for action, so I'd like to again ask you to please support this resolution and also have the county look into the incident at Braddock Park and make sure that there are clear policies and procedures in place when ICE shows up in county spaces like schools or parks, if that were to happen again in the future. Thank you.
Chairman, before the next speaker, the record should reflect that Commissioner Kopez is present. Any, any other speakers on agenda items only?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm here for resolution number thirty-two. I don't want to be here, but I can't ignore what's going on. I can't ignore a president who has threatened states and cities with the National Guard, the fact that Jersey City is on a list of sanctuary cities the Fed has threatened to send troops to. Federal propaganda eroding not only American social societal norms, but also the rule of law, giving what seems unlimited power to some immigration, immigration agencies, agencies that hunt the less fortunate with monetary gain, with the big beautiful bill, billions being spent on agencies that are simply just another national prison system. No system is perfect. We've had decades of, on the, on the, decades of undocumented immigrants, those who participated in this American dream, some who received status, some who have become legal after years of waiting asylum seekers and so on, all who have participated into the economy of the city and state. To me, it seems like a lose-lose what is going on with this hammer of immigration federal policy. And so seeing what is going on in other cities seems ridiculous. A day or so ago, ICE agents held a five-year-old autistic girl outside of Massachusetts home to bait her father, and I want protections against this because there are plenty of undocumented that are not evil terrorist criminals like some media says or repeats. And I'm not here to protect criminals, which is why I and many believe we need further implementation of the Immigrant Trust Act to protect immigrant communities that have been here for years, who have not caused trouble. As it stands, on September two, twenty-twenty-five, someone recorded immigrate, immigration agencies, agents staging up at Braddock Park in North Bergen. This seems to be evidence that some officers were in violation of the Immigrant Trust Directive, that the state and feds should not be working together when it comes to immigration policy. People are scared of power. Some people are scared of just, you know, just regular police, and, you know, I don't want people to be scared. Sorry, I lost my place, so that was me ribbing. Can you imagine how people feel with mass agents who don't, who seem that they don't have to follow constitutional laws? We need to use our state rights, protect our communities, protect, protect our communities. We don't need agents in the streets acting like bounty hunters to hit quotas. It's a detriment to our society, to our economy, to our American identity of the melting pot as Hudson County is extremely diverse, many, many undocumented, this, who have not committed crimes and are not terrorists and not criminals. The immigration policy hammer is a detriment to the good old, good old America dream. Immigration policy has not been perfect, but we don't need agencies acting as bounty hunters in the streets or courts. Thank you for your time.
Are there any further comments on the agenda only?
Hello, I'm here for resolution number thirty-two.
Your name, please.
My name is Sarah, and I'm here not only as a resident of Hudson County, but as a parent, a community volunteer, a PTA vice president, and someone deeply invested in the safety and well-being of our neighborhoods. Tonight, I urge you to pass a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. This is not just policy, it's about protecting the fabric of our community. When we allow fear to dictate who feels safe calling the police, we all lose. No person should hesitate to report abuse. No child should fear that asking for help might lead to their families being torn apart. The Immigrant Trust Act ensures that local law enforcement focuses on public safety, not immigration enforcement. It means victims of domestic violence, sexual abuse, human trafficking, whether children or adults, can step forward without fear of deportation. That's how we build trust. That's how we stop crimes before they escalate. We must remember, America is a nation built by immigrants, and yet history has shown us time and time again how easily immigrants become scapegoats in times of political tension. Hudson County can choose a different path. You can lead. Supporting the Immigrant Trust Act sends a clear message. We protect all our residents, we stand for justice, and we prioritize the safety over fear.
Good evening, my name's Adrian Ginda, G H A I N D A. So I come here tonight as a child of immigrants and a lifelong resident of Jersey City. Something that they always taught us in the public schools in Jersey City is that we should be proud of our diversity, and as someone that's inherently a political person, I think for us to truly designate New Jersey as a safe blue state is by ensuring all the cities of Hudson County, our county, as well as our state, are making sure that all our immigrant communities are being protected. And the story that I want to share is the story of my parents, who were undocumented immigrants until recently. When I was a teenager, my dad got his citizenship when I was about thirteen, fourteen years old, so I was a freshman in high school. I was helping my dad study for his, his immigration test, and at the same time, I was talking to lawyers on my mom's behalf, because at that time, my mom was fully undocumented. And as you can imagine, growing up in these circumstances, there were days that I would come home from school fearing the worst. What if I come home, my mom's not home? What if I come home and I'm greeted by my dad in tears because my, our situation would be no different than any others who go through these circumstances but don't really have that outlet to say, hey, I can ask for help from whatever entity possible? And the reason that I find myself here tonight is because I have that opportunity in my adulthood to be, to have that courage, to channel that courage that every children of immigrants don't necessarily have because of that fear, that fear of when you leave your house, you're no longer safe because of these vested institutions that want to split up families, that want to do their undemocratic process of, by honestly, inflicting trauma onto these families. And that's something that I feel needs to be protected by making sure that we have this resolution to ensure that we're backing the Immigrant Trust Act. For a democracy to truly work, we have to go from every angle conceivably possible to ensure that we have this broad coalition of saying, if these are the people that are being targeted, we have to have their back. And truthfully, I'm hoping that the Board of Commissioners does decide to do that and support this resolution and make, make your way down to Trenton when it comes time for this resolution to be brought before the Senate. So with that being said, my story isn't different than anyone else's. The only difference is, is that I'm allowed to have that courage and talk about my parents' story, whereas some people don't really feel emboldened by that because of their situation. So that being said, I would genuinely appreciate the Board of Commissioners passing this resolution to show their support for the ITA. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, I'll be quick then. My name is Tony Faber. I'm also here to speak on behalf of resolution thirty-two and the Immigrant Trust Act. I'm a former resident of Jersey City. I now live in Scotch Plains, where, around where I live, there have been all kinds of raids, none of these to get rid of criminals, all of them to round up mass numbers of day laborers. I don't know how this makes us more safe or helps our economy. As others have pointed to, this whole thing just makes our community less safe. Not is it, not only do undocumented immigrants are not going to be able to not speak to police or other agencies if the, if, if cops are allowed to work with ICE, but families will not speak to cops or other government agencies either. It makes all of us less safe. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Hi, my name's John Ferseegel. I'm a resident of Jersey City, Ward D. I'm here to, I'm here today to urge you to immediately pass resolution number thirty-two in support of the New Jer, New Jersey Immigrant Trust Act. This act protects immigrants when they interact with government agencies and reinforces the separation between local law enforcement and federal immigration enforcement. Now more than ever, our county must stand with our immigrant community. Hudson County is one of the most diverse in New Jersey, and our communities and our neighbors are being directly targeted. It's sickening seeing the abuse of power and the active harm to our neighbors who we know and love and who add so much to our community and who need us now more than ever to stand up for what's right and put in any protections we can. Supporting this resolution is both about public safety and human decency. Every resident deserves to feel safe in our neighborhoods, in our schools, in our hospitals, and parks, et cetera. So in addition to supporting this resolution, I'd like to also ask the board the following. Has the county investigated the Braddock Park incident with the Hudson County Sheriff to ensure ICE was not assisted in a public space, something that would clearly violate the Immigrant Trust Directive? And what progress has the county made toward establishing clear policies and procedures for the next time ICE shows up in county spaces like schools or parks? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Naomi Benson Court, good afternoon. Our state is facing a real and growing threat to the city and dignity of our neighbors. Recent enforcement actions in New Jersey have left families terrified, students afraid to go to school, and whole communities reluctant to leave their homes to fear for a return of, uh, day that can continue on, that we're living in fear. This is not about left or right, it's about what is right and what's wrong. If you have the authority to act, now is a time to defend and protect our residents, immigrants, and marginalized communities who will be next if we don't, if we continue to remain silent. We call on every county and leader to stand up to protect human dignity, preserve community safety, and uphold the freedoms we promised in the land of the free. As someone who has dedicated over three years to nonprofit work, let me be blunt, if you are actually caring about the people of who you claim to serve, here are three actions you can claim and must make either today or this week. You work for us, not the other way around, so let's not forget about that. Put your money where your mouth is, so let's be real. Allocate the emergency social services like childcare, men, uh, mental health services, rental assistance for families who are ripped apart by detentions or deportations. Words won't pay rent or comfort a child who just lost a parent to ICE. Two, stop hiding behind closed doors. If you really want to hear the voices of our citizens, then treat communities, town halls, with the same visibility as you do for city fairs and street markets. Make them public, make them loud, and impossible to ignore. Number three, pull the curtain back on law enforcement, demand transparency from both local agencies and the state. That means notification protocols and report, um, regular briefings to the board, briefings that could be made for the public and not being pushed out from state and local news, so no more secrecy. So if there was anything that I said here today, will you serve as a follower? Will you be an example for other states?
Hello, thank you for allowing us here today. My name is Lily Benavides. I represent the Green Party of New Jersey. I am here not just as a member of the Green Party, but also as an immigrant, and I'm coming to ask you to approve this resolution, resolution thirty-two, the Immigrant Trust Act. My reasons are very personal. I've been here for thirty-six years, and there's not a day that I've been here that I have not been, um, attacked by racism or discrimination. So how do I feel safe here? I don't feel safe, my family doesn't feel safe, and I tell you an incident that happened in a month ago, so. My granddaughter, which she doesn't look Latina, and she doesn't have a Latino last name, but her car plates are on my daughter's name. She was profiled, she was raised her profile by policemen. He stopped her and he asked her if she was a US citizen. And that's, that's scary. She was very nervous, she's nineteen, and there's no reason for that. There's absolutely no reason for that. She didn't even get a ticket because there was no reason for her to be stopped. So this is what's going to happen, and it's already happening in some towns. We have ICE standing on the highways, stopping trucks that are going to work, you know, they, they know which ones. So how do they do this? They just look and see that someone is Latino and they stop them? So we need, if the state, if the two parties are not taking a decision on the Immigrant Trust Act, then the towns have to start doing this to protect our communities. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maya Bunthan-Arenoff, and I was gonna speak on resolution thirty-two, but you said you're gonna pass it, so I'm gonna say thank you so much for doing that. I really appreciate you listening to the constituent who's been coming up, asking for it, and I think it's gonna place really important upward pressure on the state legislature to get this passed, so I won't waste your time on why it's a good idea, because you already agree. But I did wanna kind of go a bit further. This is my first time in front of, in front of y'all. I've lived in Weehawken for two years now with my aunt, who's lived here for like forty years, and I think that it's so great that we're gonna pass a resolution to support the Immigrant Trust Act. I am wondering if there's other things that the county commissioners might be able to do to protect the community from being terrorized by these federal agents, really on almost a daily basis in parts of the county like North Bergen and Parque de Chanta, Braddock Park area. It's not just the incident that was captured on video where a community member spotted these masked armed gunmen in the park, and, you know, a Hudson County Sheriff Officer Santos clearly tried to obstruct the community member from exercising their First Amendment right to document, right? That's the incident everyone's been referring to. But the ICE has been in that park at least five times confirmed this summer, quite literally kidnapping people who are going by on their morning jog, people who are day laborers waiting to go to work, families come in that park, it's really the heart of the community, and now it's very sad that even from the time when I first moved here to now, seeing how that park is emptied out because people are just absolutely living in terror. And so being that the car, parks are county property, I'm wondering what the county can do beyond the resolution to try and gut ICE out of there. One thing, of course, as the ITA Act would require, is maybe having some, some reporting or, or requirements of proof that sheriff says they're not cooperating with ICE, but, you know, there was an agent on camera, asking a community member, well, how do you know they're ICE? And then, and then saying, well, don't interfere. So it's like, do you know they're ICE or not? And if, if you know they're ICE, why are you helping? And if you don't know they're ICE, why don't, aren't you asking them for identification? Because there are masked men in a park, right? It's a very strange incident. So there could be some accountability there, but beyond that, is there a way that the county can ban ICE from these parks? I know they're public parks, but I know there's ordinances that require them only to be used for recreation, and that doesn't look like fun to me or anyone else. So I'm just wondering if we can think creatively about, about protecting our parks and our public spaces, and then also, as someone else mentioned, whether there's any county funds available to support families who are so devastated by this, or businesses along the park who are seeing a precipitous drop in customers and that kind of thing. So I look forward to coming more often, and I love a good public comment, and appreciate you listening to the community, and I'm excited to see you, y'all pass the act, so thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, just before, because, so from last week's incident in the Heights, which I was, I found myself engaged with the, the, the wife and the children, up to like ten-thirty last night, and I have to give a lot of credit to county clerk, Junior Maldonado, who actually is a neighbor, lives across the street, and to Carmen Mendiola, who is, who is remote, who was able to get on the phone last night and speak, and speak to the wife. One of the concerns that I think we need to address immediately, and Carmen is an attorney, and she was very helpful, and thank God today, that woman's case was postponed to now allow her to really get and lock in an attorney to represent her in her, in her request for asylum. But currently, we fund a program called One New Jersey, and I was proud to sponsor it many years ago, and at that time, its purpose was to take individuals that had status and guide them through to get their citizenship. Heard Adrian speak, speak early about his dad and his mom, and that program was created under the auspices with the AFL-CI many years ago. But today, that mission, and Julie was helpful last week in, in referring someone, ultimately they weren't able to do the representation at the time, but we, we need to meet with that, that group and redirect or add to what their functions are to provide certain legal attorney access, because that woman would have walked in today. Back to the earlier speaker, she has two children, an eight-year-old and a fourteen-year-old, and there was a whole question, should, and all three of them were, were, were subject to what the hearing was gonna be today. Should the children go? And if they don't go and she's taken away, what happens to their children? It wasn't even, it wasn't even a guardianship paper available, and I learned a lot of this in the last few days-
Yeah.
-to make sure that if that, God forbid that happened, what would happen to those children when they came, came home from school that day? So I, I think, I think the issue with, with the parks and the sheriff, certainly, the Public Safety Committee needs to figure that out. We need to, we need to address that. People shouldn't be afraid to go to a park because of their status, and someone may randomly show up with a mask and start to demand ID and take them away. That's insanity. The, the, the last time things like that happened was back in Germany, many, many, many years, even before I was born. But additionally, and all those services you spoke about, yeah, we need to provide them, we need, we need to make sure that in instances where families divided, whoever remains here, especially when you have children, that we do everything we can for them. But immediately, we need to, Mr. Administrator, convene a meeting or bring One New Jersey here to the next caucus, because we gotta discuss creating some legal access, because obviously, in this case, the woman that was, that went to, to the first hearing, was handed basically a piece of paper, and there was a phone number call. She said that she called that number multiple times and nobody answered. That's a problem. So if, if somehow, and I don't want to be a conspiracy theory, there is, but if somehow the government is giving out a piece of paper, telling people to call a number, and that number is not gonna get to provide them the legal services they're entitled to, then we have a major problem, and we're probably having people, you know, families being deported, never given the opportunity to fully have type of representation to present a case there. So I think that, that is an equally urgent need, just because I found being, being somewhere last Thursday, having the county clerk call me, going with Mr. Zupa to the house, spending over an hour there, listening to actually what incident was, what happened, and then playing it through to last night, and again, Carmen's on the phone, I have to thank her again, because there was a panic as to what was gonna happen today. So I think, Mr. Administrator, we fund that agency, we funded for many years, it's had a lot of successes, but I think even Julia admits, their mission has to be either changed or added on to, because they're the first person I'm calling when I have someone in a situation like the one that I encountered last week. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Heisinger. I've been a resident of Hudson County for over a decade. I'm here to speak about the same resolution. I know you all plan to pass it, so I won't be too self-indulgent here. I'll be brief, and I'll get into practicalities too, but I do wanna start by mentioning the stakes briefly. You know, we are in the midst of a massive wave of authoritarian and fascism rolling through our country, and the psychoanalyst Theodore Raichone said, it has been said that history repeats itself, but this is perhaps not quite correct, it nearly rhymes. And what we're seeing now, the scapegoating of immigrants for crime and economic hardship, the violence and family separations, they all rhyme, and history will remember who allowed this to happen and who stood up. And so I'm asking you to stand up. I thank you for voting in favor of this resolution and urging the state of New Jersey to fortify protections for our neighbors here in Hudson County, and I implore you, the work does not stop with telling the state to pass a law. Some folks have offered ideas here, and I'll just offer a couple more. I would ask that you please work with us, please work with the community to develop a comprehensive plan to protect our neighbors. We can work together to expand access to Know Your Rights trainings, and maybe with the help of One New Jersey- and maybe with the help of One New Jersey, expanding legal support for affected families. We can ban federal agents from wearing masks while conducting immigration enforcement, which other municipalities and counties around the country have done. And we can expand other protections at the, at the county level. And so please, I just ask that passing a resolution, telling the state to pass a law, is not the end of this conversation, but the beginning. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Hunt, and I'm from Monroe Township. Thank you, Mr. O'Day, for your comments. I also work with a community group called D-I-R-E, Dire, and we do much of the work that you're describing. So when families will, when ICE is in the neighborhood, somebody perhaps gets taken or they go to a warehouse and take 100 people, all without their Fourth Amendment rights. Yep, all without a judicial warrant. And apparently, our police can't arrest them for doing that. So what we do is we'll, we'll do, we have a rapid response team. We also help people find the lawyers that they need, identify and collect the data for the lawyers so that they can remember what has just happened. We write it down and record it so that they will have it for their visit to the lawyer. We help with counseling families, we help them find rent payments. Just a lot of things that we do as a group of churches and community groups, and which you could probably use as a model for your own team here that you could do. We also tell businesses that, you know, we teach Know Your Rights to individuals. We also let businesses know that they have rights and what they can do to protect their businesses, that they don't have to let ICE into their private areas, that they can tell their employees, if somebody asks you, you tell them to tell, to ask us, because we have done the paperwork. We're the ones who manage this business, you know? So, you know, get the word out, tell people what their rights are and what they can do. Businesses have rights too. Now, I wanted to let you know, I really am thankful that you have voted to pass the ITA. And it's so appropriate that this should start in municipalities. Because years ago, if you take a little trip back a couple of years, we did have an autocrat, King George. And British soldiers could come to your house or grab you on the street or whatever, take any man, woman, child, any animal, any of your stuff, any of your crops. And people didn't like that. So municipalities started passing resolutions, ordinances, and these finally made their way up to the state government level. And then when we did finally have a national government, made it into the Constitution as the Fourth Amendment. Stand up for the Fourth Amendment, use it or lose it. So I would request that you let everybody know what the Fourth Amendment is, that they have to have a judicial warrant to come and get people. They can't just run around with masks and snatch people, kidnap people off the street, disappear them so you don't even know where they went. They don't have to, uh huh, they need to have a judicial warrants. And I really think that we should have some officers that maintain that here. Yeah, I think so, I do.
Can you leave your contact information?
I did sign up actually online.
Contact that we could follow up on some.
Sure, sure, I sure will. Who wish that I leave it?
Leave it without news right there.
Okay, I'll leave it with you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So thank you very much. And also want to add, I am an RN. And everything I do has to be documented. I have to identify myself. ICE agents don't identify themselves. They don't document anything. And if our police on their off-hours work with ICE agents, they also wear masks, do not identify themselves, and do not document. They're unaccountable. Would you want to work that way if you were a professional? I wouldn't. I would not want to work for any organization as an RN. That didn't require me to match the standards of the state. And I really believe that our officers should not seek to work with ICE on any level, off-hours or whatever, because what are they doing? Not identifying themselves, not documenting, totally unaccountable. Is that what you want to be? Is that what you want to be as an officer?
Your time has expired, ma'am.
Thank you.
How you doing, Raymond Mitchell? I wanna say it's a great thing that you guys are doing for the people, immigrants that come over here and that wanna do something for America. But, you know, the criminals and stuff like that, murderers, sex assault and all that stuff, we should be taking them in, I should be arresting them. And also about, how about they're American-born? I've been here for months, and nobody ever took their time, even though they has not even took his time out and said anything or any help for me and my.
On the agenda, Mr. Mitchell.
That is on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, Mr. Mitchell.
It's not on the agenda? We're comparing, we're comparing what's going on.
You have signed up to speak on that particular matter?
I am.
At the end, but not now. This is on items on the agenda, what you're, what you're moving into now as subject matter is not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
It is not, no.
Okay. All right, well, I wanna, I wanna vote no on it and against it. And I hope you guys start looking what they did to me and my family here, okay? In this pandemic. How it's set up.
On the agenda, Mr. Mitchell.
May I have motion to approve all items on, listed on the consent agenda?
Second.
Commissioner Ponti Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Basileis. Commissioner Sodano.
Yes.
Commissioners Felley.
Yes.
Commissioner Copaz. Commissioner O'Day.
I'm staying on 16A, and I on the rest.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano. We have one ordinance for introduction, I'll read it by title. Ordinance amending the Hudson County Administrative Code pursuant to the applicant provisions of the optional county charter law NJSA 40:41A-1. Commissioner Pontilipski. Commissioner Basileis. Commissioner Sodano.
Yes.
Commissioners Felley.
Yes.
Commissioner Copaz. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes, for introduction.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano. We have three ordinance for second reading. First one, I-1, bond ordinance providing for various 2025, 2026 capital improvements at, and the acquisition and the installation of equipment for, and for buses of the Hudson County Schools of Technology located in the county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, appropriating 1,500, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 1,500 bonds and notes of the county of Hudson, state of New Jersey for financing such appropriations. On the adoption, Commissioner Pontilipski.
Public chairman.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, my bad. Are there any speakers on the, on I-1?
You mean a motion to close?
To close?
All in favor?
Aye.
Prior, prior to adoption, is, is someone from the school available? I know Superintendent sent me an email, and I sent an email back. So I don't know.
I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Chairman.
I was informed that the.
Superintendent has not been brought up to speed with regard to the buses? He's only taken over?
I, I don't know that. I, I would defer to Alicia Abraham, she raised her hand.
Go ahead, Alicia.
Hi, yes, I'm here. I believe the superintendent contacted Commissioner O'Day by email yesterday, and I think they're in correspondence.
Yeah, I responded, but I did not see a response to mine. So I, he, he, his, his email said that he had, I had questions. Asked me to send the questions and concerns, and he said he would answer to the best of the ability. I'm fine. He said he has his board meeting at the same time. So I, I don't, I'm not faulting him for not being available. But the concern was, why should county-related bus trips pay per bus rental fee when the county buys the buses and replacement vehicle? Paying for drivers is fine, and even gas reimbursement, which could easily be based on number of miles for, for the trip. So that's a question and concern that I have.
Can I relay that message? And I guess he will follow up with you?
Well, I mean, we'll have him available at the next caucus. I, I don't need follow-up emails. I think it's pretty simple. It's, it's my position, and I think it should be the county's position, that trips that are related to county functions, the most obvious one is the boat rides, should not have to pay a $250 fee in addition to paying for the driver. Most of those buses drive an average of 10 miles or less from the point of picking up individuals, bringing them to Weehawken, and then bringing them back. I don't know what 10 miles is, a couple, a couple of gallons of gasoline, and they could add that to the cost. And if it's within county, maybe they shouldn't even look at that factor. But it doesn't seem fair and reasonable. I mean, the whole cost is a different discussion, but it doesn't seem fair and reasonable to charge that fee to the government, which purchased the vehicle. So I, I don't wanna hold this up, because my understanding is most of this money's already been spent, and it's reimbursing for monies that have been spent. But obviously, part of it includes purchasing buses, and, and we need to resolve that issue. And if, as the chairman said, the superintendent is not aware of it, maybe it predated him taking over as a superintendent, fine. But we need to resolve it by the next meeting. I think it, I think it makes absolutely no sense to me why I would buy a vehicle for you, and then when I, when, when I needed to use it for a government purpose, not only am I paying the hourly rate for the driver, because why should you have to incur a cost? But I'm paying you a fee to use the vehicle that I bought. Makes no sense, makes no logical sense. So I would, I would hope that this issue is resolved by, by the next caucus or meeting. If not, then I am strongly requesting or almost demanding that the superintendent physically be here to have that issue discussed. That's my only question.
Continue, Mr. Clark.
On adoption, Commissioner Raponti Lipsky. Commissioner Basileis.
Yes.
Commissioner Sodano.
Yes.
Commissioners Felley.
Yes.
Commissioner Copaz. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
We have an additional ordinance for adoption, A-2. Bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of capital projects for fiscal year 2026 by and for the Hudson County Community College located within the county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, appropriating $6,634,062, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $6,634,062 bonds and notes of the county of Hudson, the state of New Jersey for financing such appropriations, the principal and interest on the aggregate principal amount of which will be entitled, entitled to state aid pursuant to Chapter 12 of the laws of New Jersey of 1971. Is there any speakers on this ordinance?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On A-2, Commissioner Raponti Lipsky. Commissioner Basileis.
Yes.
Commissioner Sodano.
Yes.
Commissioners Felley.
Yes.
Commissioner Copaz. Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
We have an additional resolution for, I mean, ordinance for adoption, A-3. Ordinance amending Chapter 200, Article 1800 of the Administrative Code to regulate bus stops on Bergen County, Bergen Turpik in the township of Bergen County, a county-owned roadway. Are there any speakers on this ordinance? Motion to close the hearing?
Motion. Basileis and Sodano.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On final adoption, Commissioner Raponti Lipsky. Commissioner Basileis. Commissioners Sodano.
Yes.
Commissioners Felley.
Yes.
Commissioner Copaz.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
That concludes the business of today's agenda. Are there any comments from the commissioners on the business of the board?
Go ahead, Al.
Um, just on, on item 32. I think the, the electorate was, for want of a better term, sold the bill of goods by the administration during the election. We were told, and I think Mr. Mitchell correctly pointed out, that no reasonable person would be against arresting, deporting hardcore criminals or undocumented. I, I don't think that's the issue. But we were sold that, that that's what this was all about. Then the administration conflated all immigrants into that category, all undocumented people into that category. And we hear horror stories every day about US citizens or people that are otherwise documented being rounded up. The idea that people come, and one of our other speakers correctly pointed out that, and I think Commissioner O'Day also alluded to the, the atrocity, if you wanna call it that, of being masked. If you're proud of what you do, and law enforcement is a proud and wonderful occupation, and it takes a certain kind of person that wanted to, that wants to do that, that person should be proud of what they do, proud of their uniform, proud of the function they carry out. Why do you need a mask is beyond me. It, it does smack of Europe in the 1930s, smacks of Chile in the 1970s, where people were rounded up and never heard from again. Families didn't know where they went, they just disappeared. That sounds stark, and it's, we think it can never happen in this country. But as one of the other speakers said, authoritarianism and fascism starts with an inch, and before you know it, it's a mile. Sometimes it happens in a swift coup where the military takes over. Sometimes it happens as, I think Anne Applebaum is, is one of the current writers on the scene about this. And there's another professor at NYU, I forget her name, I read her book called Strong Men. But Applebaum's theory is that if this is a small-moving coup, it's immigration. And then, we just saw last week, it's the First Amendment. One thing I thought of last week, when I saw, or early Tuesday, when I saw Mr. Kimmel come back on, is that if we stick together and we raise our voices, there comes a time when the bullies will back off. And we have to keep vigilant, keep solid. Again, this morning, I saw a flyer that our Homeland Security Secretary Perry, Ms. Noem, put out about honoring ICE, be proud of ICE, be proud of law enforcement. And that's, we should be proud and support law enforcement. But the hypocrisy of it astounds me, because when you look back at January 6th, where was the administration? Where was our president then? Where was he supporting our law enforcement then? He only supports law enforcement when it's about him. So I think this week, I think it was a watershed in, 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 in this fight. One thing that I think Americans share, and it's, it's, it's almost like, it's handed out to religion. It's our, our civic religion, and that's the First Amendment. So we all kinda got together behind that. There's other things we can get together, but that was something where I think the administration touched a hot stove. And maybe they'll learn, I kinda doubt it. I think we have to keep teaching them, so, thank you.
Thank you, Al. Billy?
Yes. So one of the, or more than one, at least one. So, so one of the, or more than one, at least one speaker mentioned, and I think that this is something that from, from our prosecutor to our local county agencies is gonna, is becoming a significant issue as it relates to, to ICE and immigration, is in fact domestic violence. Individuals are fearful to report domestic violence because of what their status may be. And, and, and that's kind of last week's incident. Because I had some concern as to how ICE found out what happened and, and was explained to me as once, once an arrest report is filed, all law enforcement agencies have access to that, all law enforcement agencies. Because we wondered whether someone within our system, within our correctional system may have been, and, and the county council did his homework and due diligence and said, look, this is, and, and, and he, he owes me a longer explanation, but it's my fault because I didn't call him back. But, but, you know, it was made clear to me, because I had a concern about that, are, are people within the correctional center leaving papers on the desk when they, when they finish with someone, and then somebody comes in from the federal marshal and then they, like, but, you know, his explanation seemed fair and reasonable. But we have to figure out and put in place a system, because you can't have a chilling effect where, where, whether they're men or women, they are so afraid to go make a domestic violence complaint, because if they do so, the repercussions as it relates to them could be greater than, than what, what's happening to them at, at that moment in time. So I, I would task, whether it's, it's Doris, I, I had a conversation with Stacy Flanagan last Friday from Jersey City, who's their Health and Human Services Director, on programs they may have as outlets for individuals to be able to, to, to deal with that. And we may need to put those programs in place sooner rather than later, because we don't want people to, to, to die or be killed because that fear, the same way people are now afraid to go to, to bodegas, and as some said, even to go to parks. God forbid, they're afraid to call in because of their status. What's going to happen when law enforcement goes there and says, oh, can I see your identification? So I, I, I'd ask that we, that we get Doris to reach out, maybe to Jersey City, obviously it's this countywide, not just the city. And I think we need to, sooner rather than later, come up with some other alternate ways to allow those victims to call a number, to have someone address the issue, and, and secure their ability to not now be subject to ICE when, when, when an arrest may be effectuated at, at, at a property. Let's need to put that on the record.
Just one comment in that, I'm just proud to say that local, all local law enforcement agencies, municipal, county, even state, all wear identification tags. So thank God for that, that we always had to wear them. And it shows the reflection of our adherence to the community. Continue, Mr. Clark.
Are there any comments from the Chief of Staff to the County Executive?
Jenny? Thank you, Jen. Continue, Mr. Clark.
This is time for persons who submitted timely written requests to address the board on any matter of public interest. Please remember to limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any speakers? I believe Mr. Mitchell signed up, speak tonight.
It's not funny, Brian. It's, listen, listen, what's going on? You wrote these letters. Yes or no? Did they come from your office? Are you going to investigate my father's mystery death coming out of North Bergen Harbor?
This is a TikTok, so everybody could go on. It's going viral now on TikTok, so everybody could continue that. Also, Brian Stack comes out with his little political. Says, just like soccer or basketball, the government is a team sport. I need to work with other public officials to ensure that we receive necessary funding, service, and facilitate. So who is on Brian Stack's team besides Mickey Sherrill? Oh, and I forgot, I gave a call to Mickey Sherrill, come in. Is she here? No. And Rob Menendez is here, two congressmen asked to come over and support me. Nobody's here, okay. As you said, Mr. Romano, my dad died of COVID, prosecutor's office, I did, no problem. Got nothing for it. And then Esther Suarez here says, the homicide unit under Suarez has achieved 100% solve rate, surpassing the national average of 58%. Does anybody believe in that? The national average is 58%, but she comes out with 100%? Well, I'm challenging her. And is Wayne here? Mello, so I could challenge her? Challenge him?
No, he's not.
And he, what was, what was Wayne? Mr. Plankton, the state prosecutor, said Mello has tried high-profile murder cases. So he'd be the perfect person in this case, but I can't even get ahold of him or anything. Adam, do you have anything? Order? Anybody? So what is happening here? I know we're here for the immigration and everybody and this and that, that's fine. People are people. But how about me and my family have been politically retaliated in this pandemic? Was this pandemic a genocide by a bioweapon? Did everybody know about this before it came out? Only two people that knew my father was Brian Stack and Bob Menendez, okay? The only two who knew where he was, Hackett Sack Marine and the North Bergen Harbor Bridge, and they sold it also. So am I getting the proof that my dad died of COVID? Because I have pictures of him strangled here, right on there. And I know a lot of people seen it already, so.
Three minutes, Mr. Mitchell.
There is one other speaker that has signed up, Charles Pratt. Is Mr. Pratt in attendance?
Not here.
So I guess I'm not getting any of that information, right? Was he dug out? Was he dug out of that grave? So no, so Esther Suarez, then she retires?
Time's up, sir.
I think she violated her oath, she should be in prison.
There being no further business to come before the board, may I have motion to adjourn?
Copaz.
Copaz, second. Second and by.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.